Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to the Cadillac Planning Commission for October 27th, 2025. If everyone, if able, please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Yes, shippers?
Here.
Hosts?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Bunts? Fosher?
Here.
Bowman? Funt?
Here.
Van Pelt?
Here.
Huttman?
Here. Thank you. I need approval of our agenda this evening, again, October 27th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for October as presented.
Pick somebody.
Huttman?
Yes.
Fosher?
Yes.
Bowman? Van Pelt?
Yes.
Funt?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Hosts?
Yes.
Bunts?
Moving right along. Approval of our last meeting, again, September 29th, that was a special meeting, 29th. Two oh two five, uh, meeting minutes. I'll make a motion to approve those.
Bowman? Funt?
Yes.
Bunts? Shippers?
Yes.
Van Pelt?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Fosher?
Yes.
Huttman?
Yes.
Hosts?
Yes.
Tonight, we have one public hearing. We have an application filed by Jennifer and Brian Haney requesting that property on 407 East Chapin Street be rezoned from R three to RM one. Having read that, which lady is, you're gonna update us and then we'll talk to applicants and?
Yes, please.
Perfect.
That would be great.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon or good evening. We're here for the rezoning request for the Frank J. Cobb's house. The location is at the 407 East Chapin Street. And the applicants are Jennifer and Brian Haney, today's date. So, overview. The home was built in 1898 by George Mason. It's a landmark in Cadillac's historical district. The proposal rezoned from R three, one-family residential, to RM one, multi- multiple-family residential. The goal, open a traditional, owner-occupied, three-room bed and breakfast. It does have historical significance. It is listed on the city historic registry. It's recognized in the Historic Preservation Office intensive level survey. It serves as a private residence, it has served as a private residence, apartments, and now a single-family home. Strong community ties and a respected landmark. We have the tax ID number. We have the legal description. The applicant intent, create a bed and breakfast, owner-occupied, three guest rooms. They did collaborate with the Historical District Commission with strong support and attached letter in your packet. The definition of a bed and breakfast. Tourist home. Owner lives on site. Up to eight guest rooms allowed. Proposed is three en suite rooms. Stay is less than 15 days per guest. Site features and amenities. Circular driveway. Private parking, one per guest room. Mature gardens and covered porch. Ample open space. Walking distance to Lake Cadillac and parks. Zoning context. Current zone, R dash three, single, two-family homes surrounding. Northeast, R three residential. Southwest, RM dash one, commercial near downtown. And the area is a blend of residential types, close to city center, and ideal for mixed use. Now, attached here, you see the map that is there. The blue box is the, um, home. The yellow that you see all there is single-family. The orange is the RM dash one. And the lime green that you see is the business district. So, the image here shows current zoning districts with the RM dash one being directly across the street. So, RM dash one fits local land uses and the historical neighborhood mix. Consistent with the city's master plan with supportive diverse housing and historical reuse. It encourages lodging and adaptive use near downtown. No additional's burden on the city utilities like water, sewer, and safety. Appropriateness and compliance. RM dash one is more flexible for historical homes. It aligns with nearby zoning. All zoning requirements such as parking, occupancy, compatibility can be met. Owner committed to following all codes and restrictions. Our review and approval process. The steps are review by staff and planning, the public hearing, planning commission recommendation, and then city council hearing and final vote. They're committed to no short-term rental platforms and all safety codes are observed. And the project, um, projected opening would be spring of 2026, pending all approvals. Recommendation. Staff finds the rezoning support, preservation, tourism, and economic development. It meets city goals for adaptive reuse and revitalization. Your decision required. Planning commission to recommend approval or denial to city council. Typo there, sorry. The city council for rezoning for 407 East Chapin Street, Cadillac, Michigan. The action, go to city council for public hearing and vote, and then final action, back to the planning commission for a special land use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome. Yes.
See the applicants are in the audience because I can spot them from the next thing they gave us to see before this meeting. So, that was kind of you. Do you folks have anything you want to add before I open public hearing? You're welcome to come up.
Yeah, yep, go right ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, hello. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We really appreciate it and we appreciate your time. Um, we have put together a presentation. Do I have, ah, there we go. Um, so, we are, um, hoping to have a bed and breakfast. We do want to retain that it is known as the Cobb's House here, so we think that's really important to retain that name uh, for the Cobb's House bed and breakfast. Um, so, we prepared this presentation for the planning, um, commission and, um, we're, of course, also have a company has a business plan that we're currently working on. Um, but seeing as we, you know, need to get through all of these approvals first and, um, and permitting and making sure that we go through the right process, um, we don't know whether we'll be able to do this or not. Um, we, um, don't have the full business plan quite yet. Um, so, this is my husband, Brian, and I, I'm Jennifer. Um, we are both originally from Indiana, have lived in Chicago. Um, we have, um, diverse background in advertising and marketing and theater and writing and music. We have, um, so, we're kind of all over the place with the creative field, fields. This is something we've always wanted to, to do. Um, we have been coming up to northern Michigan for 14 years, I think. We've been vacationing here and have always wanted to live up here. And, um, when we found the community of Cadillac, um, and this opportunity, we thought this is the perfect place for us. So, we're very excited to be here. Um, this is me. Um, so, I would be, um, doing most of the design and, and the marketing and the social media, um, and the cleaning and laundry. So, we really are just the two of us. We're not at this time planning to hire anyone, just the two of us running things. Um, so, um, you know, we're, we're not investors. We are people who are going to be living here. We are people who really want to be a part of the community and, um, want to take part in our own business. This is Brian and our dog, Tilda. Um, and, uh, so, Brian is, um, Brian has worked in advertising and marketing for many years. Um, he is going to be our cook, so he would be, um, preparing the breakfasts and the snacks for any guests that come to stay with us. Um, so, our intention is to, um, open a traditional, owner-occupied, bed and breakfast at the Cobb's House. This is not an Airbnb. This is someplace where we would live, we would be residents in the house. Um, and we really think that it's important to share this house, this beautiful house, um, and with not only, um, guests who are coming here, but also with the city of Cadillac. You know, we feel like it is just something that's really important to share with, um, people who live here and with people who are coming here because it's such a beautiful showpiece, um, uh, of many showpieces here in Cadillac, so. So, we did, we have started some of our, trying to look at property history, what, um, how we understand what zoning had been. Maybe, um, our understanding is that, um, it was, of course, built as a single-family home and went through as a single-family home for several years and then sixties, seventies, and eighties was cut up into, um, I believe, five different apartments. Um, and that was perhaps before there was a zoning ordinance. Um, and then I think Dr. Hyink is the one who came back and, uh, and brought it back to, um, a, uh, single-family home. And, uh, then Mr. Mark Snyder and his family has, um, they've maintained this beautiful home for many years. Um, so, it's kind of why we thought this would be such a perfect place for a bed and breakfast because even though it's currently a single-family home, it's set up perfectly with three en suite bedrooms. And then, um, in the attic where there had been, um, a, uh, an apartment previously, that's where we would end up living because it would be set up perfectly for that. Um, so, for the guests, um, the home would offer three en suite guest rooms. There's a breakfast room that overlooks the covered porch and the grounds. Um, there is a formal dining room and, um, what we're calling a game room, which is, um, which is where we, uh, would set up some games for guests to play. Um, and then, um, a, a formal living room and lounging area. And then, um, we believe that there's enough, um, room on the cement driveway, so there is a brick circle drive. But we also believe that on the cement, um, driveway, that there would be enough space to carve out one parking space for each room. So, really, we want this to be, um, like a respite for people who are coming. You know, this is not, um, someplace where maybe you're going to have like a big party. This is someplace where you're going to come and you're going to rest, um, and revitalize and, um, enjoy everything that Cadillac has to offer and what northern Michigan has to offer. We've really liked the phrase that we've seen several places that says, you know, Cadillac's in the, you know, in the middle of everywhere, um, because we find that to be true. We've used it as our jumping off point. So, um, so, that's kind of what we are envisioning for this property. Um, it's really important to us that we're adding value, um, to the city of Cadillac. Um, you know, we've been, we've been spending our time, you know, researching history here, um, local culture, um, you know, reading news articles and I've watched a lot of, um, planning commission meetings and historic district commission meetings and city, um, city council meetings just to kind of see, um, you know, what's top of mind for people here and, um, certainly when other, um, properties have come up, um, for rezoning, um, you know, what people are concerned about. Um, and, um, just to make sure that we weren't starting down the wrong avenue, even before we'd purchased the property, that was important to us. And we did reach out to Historic District Commission, um, members prior to the meeting just to, even to see if, you know, this was something that they were interested in, um, for the district. Um, again, so, um, adding value to Cadillac, um, you know, we believe that, um, you know, this is a great way to preserve this, this historic property, um, and, um, and to share it with the, with, uh, guests and with the city of Cadillac. And, um, you know, maybe bringing a new type of tourist here too because, um, uh, we've certainly seen, um, and I think I have a slide here later, that, that, um, there's lots of places to stay. There's nothing that's like this in the area. Um, but, uh, so, we think it's something that would be new. Um, and, you know, we think it'd be really great to, to support and to promote, um, local businesses here in Cadillac. Um, it would be really great if we could, you, you know, um, feature a lot of, you know, some of the foods and some of the different places here as part of, um, what our offerings would be. So. So, our target market would really be, you know, couples who are looking for a respite, people who are looking to explore northern Michigan, um, you know, friends who are just meeting, coming together to have a nice weekend together. Um, we like the idea of a creative retreat because we come from creative backgrounds. Um, so, just kind of, um, a different maybe type of customer. I think there's a lot of places for families to stay here. This is not maybe going to be necessarily a place where you're going to bring your kids, if you have little kids or something, right? Because it's a big historic home and it's really a place that you're just gonna go, go for sanctuary for yourself. So, um, we'll be starting, we would start our own website. We would join the Midwest Association of Independent Inns, um, because the Michigan Bed and Breakfast Association just, um, uh, merged with them. Um, we would also be working with the tourist bureau, um, of course, working with local businesses. We would really be relying on word of mouth, social channels. Um, we do not plan to be on Airbnb or VRBO. We think that that really blurs the line. And Airbnb is very different than what we want to offer. We are really wanting to offer the traditional bed and breakfast, you know, the, which is places that we like to stay, so that's what we want to do. Um, so, we would follow any ordinance about, uh, guest time limits. Bed and breakfast tend to be a little bit more expensive than other places. And so, it's, you know, two weeks for someone to come and stay at a bed and breakfast would be a really long time. That'd be great, but, um, we wouldn't expect them to do that. We would expect more like getaway weekend or something. Um, um, maybe, you know, three or four days at most, but. Um, as we said, we do think we could carve out some parking. Um, if, uh, if we have that assessed and it, that's not possible, we, of course, would work with any kind of ordinances about parking and what's, um, what is going to be acceptable. Um, so, um, you know, street parking, we've been looking at street parking ordinances and overnight parking and all of that. Basically, we just want to, we want to be in compliance with whatever, um, whatever is okay, whatever we can legally do or not, you know, if we can't do that, then we'll work to make sure that it works for everyone. Of course, all safety regulations. Um, I'm kind of a worry wart, so, um, I only want to make sure that we are following all fire codes, all safety regulations, whatever's needed to make sure that we're in compliance and keeping, um, our guests and ourselves and our neighbors safe. Um, we were asked to provide some ideas of what, how we see this being. So, this is what it currently looks like, one of the guest bedrooms, um, which we're calling Maud after, um, the original mistress of the Cobb's House, Frank J. Cobb's wife. Um, and, um, so, this is what it currently looks like. This is a vision. Of course, it's not what it actually is and probably maybe look very different to this, but this is my vision for that room. So, it's really kind of a sanctuary, create, you know, place for creative thought and, um, rest and respite. This, we're calling the groovy room because of, um, there are two fireplaces with, um, very special tile, groovy tile. And, um, so, we're calling this the groovy room right now. And so, this one, we have kind of more of an energetic feel. Um, and it's one of our smaller rooms, so we thought something light and bright and happy, like the light that comes through the window. And this one is Frank after Frank J. Cobb's, um, one of the larger rooms here. And this one, we thought maybe more of a natural aesthetic, um, and, uh, kind of removing you from daily life. All three have, uh, their own en suites. They are very, uh, two of them still have a lot of the original Victorian features in there. Um, and, uh, but we do want to, one, keep some of that aesthetic, but for safety reasons and also because some more modern, uh, guests is going to want more modern amenities. Um, we do, uh, hope to, um, renovate those to include some showers. And we did do some research on Cadillac accommodations. There are, of course, there are hotels, there are motels, there are cabin rentals, um, you know, and our, our plan is we do not want to take away anything from, um, businesses that are currently here in Cadillac. We're not trying to steal anybody's business. We're talking three rooms. We're talking maybe a, a different kind of guest, um, here that wants to, you know, we, we've gone to Mackinac Timbers, we love Mackinac Timbers, um, we think it's really great. This is different than Mackinac Timbers too, right? So, um, but, uh, so, we were just really, we actually want to work with businesses there too. So, if we can't accommodate, we'd say, oh, you know what? Go stay, you know, Mackinac Timbers or wherever and talk to people and, um, and support one another. Um, there's nothing really in that, um, area right in, you know, of course, in the historic district and, and anywhere that's right there by that downtown, a little, starting to get a little further out, then you see more. And of course, in between the lakes is currently where we see the most accommodations. Um, so, this is just the list of, um, what we've seen. So, short-term rentals, chain hotels, motels, locally owned, um, hotels, motels, resorts. Um, no bed and breakfast, no traditional, you know, owner-occupied bed and breakfast that, that we've been able to find because we looked, when we were looking for places to stay here too. So, um, thank you so much for listening to my perhaps long presentation. But, um, we're very excited and, um, you know, we hope that, uh, this, uh, is something that other people are excited about as well.
Wonderful. Any questions for Jennifer, board? Covered it?
Good job.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, at this time, um, we'll go ahead here and open the quote, public hearing. So, anyone here to speak for or against, please come to the podium, state your name, please. Uh, write that down on the paper there provided and we'll keep this going.
Guess I'll be first.
Perfect.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Bruce Weller and I live at three oh two East Chapin Street. So. Always bring my own, just in case you have dry ink pens, right?
We had a communication from you, Bruce, just for combo in our packet.
Yes, appreciate that. Okay, there we go. Got that. So. As you just mentioned, uh, I, uh, wrote a letter and, uh, I just want to share a little bit. Uh, I think the letter pretty much explains my, uh, thoughts around this. And first of all, is, um, you know, I very much support a bed and breakfast in, in that, um, in that residence. That's, that doesn't bother me at all. In fact, my wife and I, we travel and we usually will stay at a bed and breakfast. So, we appreciate the, the, um, you know, the, the opportunities that that provides and understand that. So, um, I appreciate Jennifer sharing that and that information. My, my concern is really just with the change of the zone. And, um, I, I'm concerned because once it gets moved over to an RM one, that opens up the door for a lot of other different opportunities for that, um, that resident, that property be used beyond just a bed and breakfast. And it's not to say that the current, um, interested buyers are planning to do anything other than run a bed and breakfast, but, um, businesses come and businesses go. And, uh, when that happens, you know, if down the years, uh, down the road, a few years and, um, that particular bed and breakfast, they decide they want to sell it or they, uh, just want to, um, move on to something else. That property, then the, the rezoning that you guys are about to do is going to stick with that property. It's never going to be coming back to a R, R, uh, three. And that R three provides protection and provides protection for the neighborhood and for the community. And right now, that's kind of on the break, um, break areas that was demonstrated in the earlier presentation showing where the property lies. So, you end up with this creep fact that keeps going on. You know, if a house or a residence wants to do something, do you continue to rezone it? Or do you take an opportunity? What I'm suggesting is leave it as an R, uh, three and then take the opportunity to use, go to the special use option. That appears to be in the, um, in the section of the Code of Ordinances, chapter 26, zoning. And on eight, like I mentioned, it appears that there's an opportunity to go ahead and allow for a special use that is basically beyond the, the single-family resident was there. So, if that business was ever to change or, or be removed or get sold, then it allows that residence go fall back into that full protection of the R, um, R three. So, that's, um, you know, I just want to reemphasize the importance of that. And I think there's, um, reasons why you want to have those, those protections in place to preserve the neighborhood, to, um, encourage other investments to be a part and harmonize with things like this. So, you know, my question would be is if the Cobb House was in the middle of the block or further north, would this be allowed? Would you have to go in and rezone just that little piece of property just to make this opportunity for them to have a bed and breakfast? And my thoughts is I would hope you wouldn't. I would hope that you would be able to just leave it zoned as it is and just go through the special use permit and allow for that to operate as if the residents have the opportunities to either support it or if they have oppositions, that can be done at that time as well. So. That's what I wanted to share with you tonight. Appreciate your time, appreciate your.
Appreciate yours.
Yep, so, and again, I am full supporter of it. I appreciate what, what was presented. It's very, I think it's a good opportunity for that property, just the zoning, so, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Good evening.
Martin Dubravik, 406 East Chapin. Um, we're right across the street from this property. So, um, I would second Bruce's, uh, recommendation. Is that possible? To do an R three?
Um, staff will have to help me with that. I don't think it's possible. I love the idea personally, but I will have to go to staff on that when I close this public hearing.
Okay. So, I'm in favor of this property being a bed and breakfast. Uh, I have spoken with my concerns before to this body as well as the city council regarding enforcement of short-term rentals. Unfortunately, I think the city has missed the boat on that and we've had a lot of problems with short-term rentals. And we've had a lot of problems with short-term rentals giving these folks potentially a harder time with regard to confusion regarding a bed and breakfast which is owner occupied versus a short-term rental. I think they've done their homework. I think they've gone over and above in doing their homework. You know, they're buying a property without the guarantee of this, and yet they're willing to do that. So I think that speaks volumes of them. They come from, you know, they currently live in Beverly, which is a place I'm very familiar with because I went to medical school in Chicago and lived in that area. So I think they're well aware of this type of setup. The house has been on the market for a few years, hasn't sold. I would much rather see a bed and breakfast than an apartment, the house being, you know, cut up into apartments. And so, you know, both my wife and I are in favor of them. You know, they, like I said, they've, they've really gone out of their way to, to, to make this thing try to work. And I, you know, we stay in bed and breakfast all the time. This would be great for the community and for us, I think. And, and they would maintain the property. You're not going to have a successful bed and breakfast if you don't maintain the property well. And, you know, I, I, I think this is a very good idea. I, I do agree with Bruce, so I think Bruce's idea is excellent as far as that for the future. And he's absolutely right. What if this were in the middle of a block? You know, would, would we be having this discussion? And the other thing is, one thing I wanted to say too, when it comes to parking, they've, they've got plenty of parking across the street there for this bed and breakfast. To me, that's not an issue whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Barbara Wolf Van Laken and I live at 211 Prospect Street. I, I, I thank the Cadillac News for having something in the paper last week. It was the first that I saw of this. And I read what Bruce Wellerver had proposed and it was like, yeah, to me, that seems like a perfect option. And as you said, you don't know if we can do that within the R3. But I certainly hope so. I think for this property, I, I grew up in Cadillac. I remember when I was in grade school, I went to dance class with Mrs. Lance when it was a single-family home. And by the time I was in high school with Dale, it was apartments and it was rundown and it was awful. And it has been great to see it restored over the years. And it's a beautiful property. And as the other two have, have said, I think it would be a great a, as a bed and breakfast. It gives an opportunity for people outside of the area to go. But also for people that have always seen the Cobb house, it's like, oh, I can go stay there at the bed and breakfast for a night. I, I think that you would get a lot of, of things that way. So I'm in support of the bed and breakfast. My hope is, is we wouldn't have to do a rezoning that you could do a special use permit.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Song and I live with my daughter at 430 East Chapin Street. We're neighbors. Welcome to the neighborhood. And I hope that your endeavor works out. I agree with everyone here that this is needed for Cadillac. It's something that's been missing. You will supply a niche that is very desirable. I also have the same concerns about the zoning. If you can find a way around rezoning, that would be very desirable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else this evening? Any input on our bed and breakfast?
Short and sweet, John. John Horgan, 324 Prospect. 100% behind what they're doing. But as I've spoken before and Martin has said, I get nervous whenever we have a change up in the, from the R3. But I would hope you could do it in a special way. But I think it's an excellent idea, great presentation. I just echo what everybody said.
Wonderful. Thank you, John. They got him on camera. Well, good. Anyone else? You don't need to be bashful. I try to make everybody comfortable. Okay. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. So then we can look at staff for answers on your proposal, which I love the proposal, but I don't know if we can do that. So, do you want to ask the question there, Rick?
We'll let them fire away with their knowledge first.
Okay.
Is it possible, under a special use permit?
For R3 without rezoning?
So I'll jump in.
Perfect.
And the experts will correct me, including Legal, who's, who's listening on the, on the TV there. So the zone that's being requested, which is the RM3, right? RM, yeah. RM1, sorry, RM1, has bed and breakfast as a use that's allowed within that zone, but it is not allowed by right. Meaning that anybody that is within that zone would still need to come to the planning commission and go through a special use permitting request process, which is a public process, in order to receive the authority from your body, from this body, to be able to, to do that use. The current zone in which this property sits in does not have the bed and, bed and breakfast use listed as an appropriate use from that zone, within that zone. Whether you wanted to make it an appropriate use by right, meaning that you could just simply do it, or make it an appropriate use by special use, meaning that somebody would have to come and go through a special use permitting process under, you know, to the planning commission to get that authority. That doesn't exist. Now, the question of, well, could you amend the zoning code to add, presumably by special use, a bed and breakfast use under the current zoning? I would assume, unless I'm corrected by Legal or my community development staff, that the answer would be sure, yes. Policy question of whether or not you would want to do that, frankly, would be, you know, up to the planning commission as to whether or not you'd want to make that recommendation to city council. And then, of course, any area within the city that is zoned, and forgive me because my computer just shut off. What is it, RM?
R3.
R3, thank you. Would then have that, that use allowed or allowed by special use anywhere along with, you know, the RM1 and, and other, you know, business zones that we have. I, it's just another option that's out there, so, you know...
But right, but, sorry, but right now, it does not allow it. And you couldn't even do it with special use. So the question, the, can I, Joe? So the, the concern that I'm hearing is that, that businesses come and businesses go. And by rezoning it, opens it up for not just a bed and breakfast, but for other uses that may not be conducive as this buffer between single-family residential and the other zones. So are there, is there a method without, because if we try to add the use of, of bed and breakfasts in all? I'll just tell you, as, as the mayor here, if we try to put that in the zone for all of it, there will be a guillotine out front the next meeting. That, so we don't want to do that. So we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. Is there, because I know there are these little things that you can do to safeguard this so that it does not become, you know, that, that encroachment where it keeps moving closer and closer to the... Is there anything? There's got to be.
Also, so I guess, just, just dissecting and digesting the conversation. First question is, can you, can you put by special use permit, bed and breakfast activity into the R3 zoning?
No.
Well, technically, you could, but would it be politically smart, policy-wise? Probably dead on arrival, right?
Yeah.
So, so then, the next question is, could you, could you somehow still allow this use in the R3, right, is what you're asking?
Yeah, so what I'm, but, no, not in R3. So if we, so what I'm, what I'm asking...
So if you're allowed in RM1 and, and they go away, let's say that they...
Yeah, so what I'm asking is, if, if we rezone this in order for this to happen, can we, is there a way to safeguard it? Because there are other things within that zone that are allowable within that zone that are not desirable in that area.
So then the question is, is this not, you know, spot zoning and whatnot? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, let, you guys. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think maybe what you're trying to get at is what's called conditional rezoning, where this piece of property could, and Mallory jump in at any point in time, where this piece of property could go through a conditional rezoning request where it would still be a RM1, but they would only be asking for the allowed use of bed and breakfast. Which then therefore, even if that conditional rezoning was approved, they still would have to go back through the special land use process as well. Mallory, would you like to explain that a little bit better than I just did?
So, conditional rezoning is a possibility, but the government cannot initiate it. It has to be something that applicants bring to the table. So for this specific application, that's not really something that is an option at this time.
So Mallory, this is Marcus jumping back in. So, you know, if the applicant wants us to go down that road, you're saying they would need to submit that request and then we could, we can get them back to do that, correct?
Yeah, yep, so it would have...
Would we need the planning commission to take any action affirmative or otherwise tonight? Or just simply go through the, the process of hosting the public hearing, which we, which we've just done? And then perhaps just table it or wait? What do you, what's your recommendation?
Since conditional rezoning can't be initiated by the planning commission, they would still need to proceed with this application under the normal process. So that shouldn't even really be a consideration that applicants could come back and submit a different version of their application. The planning commission really has to consider the application that's in front of them tonight.
Right, so, so I guess, and I'll be as clear as I can. If the planning commission tonight denies their application and does not recommend to city council that we rezone the property, I, I want to make sure that that action doesn't close the door on the opportunity for the applicants to come back with an application or a request for a conditional rezoning. It appears without, you know, I'll just say by reading the deal leaves that, you know, there was support from the historic district commission. There seems to be general support from the outlying community. And certainly, you know, just reading the faces of the planning commission, there seems to be general support from the planning commission that this use is okay. It's just a matter of process and how we get there. So does that clarify what I'm asking you?
Yep, so, yep, if this were to be, if you were to recommend not to rezone this property, that wouldn't foreclose a future application.
Okay.
But, so I think back to the special land use question. I think you had it right earlier that this property has to be rezoned to use it as a bed and breakfast by special land use. It, it can't stay the zone it is and ever become a bed and breakfast unless, as you said, Marcus, the zoning ordinance was amended to permit it as a special use in R3.
Well, how does that work then in light of the conversation we just had regarding the conditional rezoning?
Yep, so those would be just kind of two separate things. So if you were to allow bed and breakfast by special use in R3, then no one would have to, you would still have to apply for that special use. But like you said, it would apply to all of the R3 district. Whereas conditional rezoning, well, so rezoning in general would then make it, I think it's RM1, which they would still need to apply for special use permit. And then a conditional rezoning would be you're rezoned as to RM1, but only for this specific use. And so, you know, we'd probably have to look more into the details of what uses you'd want to permit because, you know, say in 20 years the property's sold, you'd want to probably maybe allow it to go back to being single-family residential or something like that. So we'd have to really look at kind of what your zoning ordinance says and the future, like, land use map, master plan to see what the goals would be there.
Okay, so essentially, and, and look, you know, people, I think, perceive the words spot zoning as taboo and not a good thing, but maybe this is an example of where that type of treatment is appropriate, especially given the, what seems to be general support for, for that type of activity. So I'll kick it back to Danielle and Teresa and Mallory.
Can I, can I ask Teresa and Danielle? So what are the, in, if we do vote to change the zoning for this property, what are the, the just granted other uses that can happen? It's, it's multifamily, right?
Yep, two-family dwelling, multifamily dwellings, accessory buildings and uses customary incident to any of these is permitted in the subsection 1 through 3. And then there is a, a list of special land uses permitted, which would be recreational activities, offices and/or businesses in an existing building, office and/or business, in a dwelling, mixed use, family shelters, group shelter, combination group, family shelter, and then bed and breakfast.
But those are all by special use. So what I'm thinking is that this, this application, this zoning, all of the things that could become problematic need to go through here first. Need to go through these amazing gatekeepers even when I'm gone. And so I'm thinking that in order to get this done, you're, we are not going to convince the city council to add bed and breakfasts to all single-family areas. It's not appropriate to do that. And I think that as long as we are vigilant going forward, that if this property sells and is going to go through any kind of evolution, that we pay attention and we show up and, and make sure that it does not do what we don't want it to do. There are already multifamily homes in the area. This, it would be a travesty if that place got cut up again. And I think, I think in order for this to happen, this is, I, I really think this is the only way legally for, for this to happen.
When you're done, I got a question for staff that I want...
When you're done, I, I got a question for staff that, I'm gonna, help me look at, um, and maybe I'm not looking at the zoning code properly here. Um, so as, um, was it Bruce, I believe his name was, uh, reference forty six dash one sixty three. If we scroll down to forty six, one sixty four, principal uses permitted subject to special conditions. And we go to number nine, rooming houses and boarding houses.
Yeah, that's not a bed and breakfast.
Okay. If you look in the dictionary, what is a rooming house?
We're in an ordinance, so you need to go to our definition.
Okay, so that, that's the, that, I guess, clarify on that. You know, a private house in which rooms are rented for living or staying temporarily. How, we're, we're getting hung up on a word here, what, what's the definition of bed and breakfast versus the definition of a rooming house? Not a boarding house, a rooming house.
So in my PowerPoint I had.
This may, we're so close to this being permitted by special use without any changes and the definition of a word.
So up on the screen, I just have that bed and breakfast definition there.
I can jump in.
Yeah, what, what's the definition of a rooming house? How do we, where did we come up with the bed and breakfast definition versus the rooming house?
Yeah, so rooming and boarding houses are more, um, a permanent dwelling under your zoning ordinance versus, you know, someone's coming for a long weekend, um, they're more, um, where, where someone's living is their permanent dwelling. That's why they are generally in those kind of single or multifamily residential districts versus a commercial district.
And our ordinance actually speaks right, like I'll read the rooming house meaning word for word.
Yeah.
Rooming house means any dwelling unit or part of any dwelling unit containing one or more rooms, units, in which space is let by the owner to three or more persons, not immediate family. When rooms are let to less than three persons, the dwelling must comply with the requirements of a single family dwelling unit, unless otherwise required in this code. The term rooming house shall not include a bed and breakfast, hotel, motel, or other transient uses less than thirty days.
So if I can also, maybe just jump in again here, you know, there's, there are a couple of options that we have, right? So one option is, you know, planning commission um, recognizes that all of the special uses for the new zoning, the, the R M one, should you do the, the rezoning i- in, in an affirmative way, they all require going back to your board. So the concerns that were brought forward as a, for instance, about, you know, I love the bed and breakfast idea for this property, but I don't wanna see an apartment building there. You know, that presumably would never get through the planning commission in terms of an approval for a special use.
I'm gonna correct you just for a second.
Danielle's gonna correct.
Because multifamily isn't allowed use in R M one, so an apartment would be allowed.
What was the, the list then that you wrote or that you read?
So, um.
Yeah, cause I thought it, it talked about multi, um, multi-unit dwelling.
Correct, yep, those are the principal uses permitted.
Okay, principal uses permitted.
Yep, two family dwellings, multifamily dwellings are.
So what were the special uses permitted?
Um, offices, family shelter, group shelter, um, bed and breakfast, recreational activities.
All right, so the, the business uses are the ones that would require, and recreational uses would require the special use permit process. So the other option, right, is unless there's a timing issue, and according to staff, there isn't. The, the people that own the property, actually, well, I just said it, they already own the property. The, the other option is, is that we simply pump the brakes, finish this process, and then staff works with the applicants to come back with a conditional rezoning request that will tie bar the property simply to the one use, which would be the bed and breakfast use. So they would be receiving permission, I'm being presumptuous of course, but they would be receiving permission from the planning commission to be able to do the bed and breakfast only and not be able to do everything else.
What kinda timeline would that be? Um.
So we would have to publish, just like we did here, so your minimum, your minimum like eighteen days from today's date in order to even get the public notices posted accordingly. Um, but then we would have to go through the same process, so you guys would have to recommend the approval to council. Um, which then at council they would have to set the public hearing.
And that could be at the next meeting, could that happen at the next planning commission meeting?
Only if there was a special meeting of the planning commission called, cause you guys meet on the seventeenth of November and planning commission doesn't meet until the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah, so what about, um, this is also in the historic district. Are there any restrictions within the historic district that could protect this property from that sort of thing?
And not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
No?
Here's an out of the box question, listening to all these. City attorney mentioned if, if, uh, this thing gets sold in twenty years, can we put a stipulation if this is sold, goes back to R three?
Not with this rezoning request that's before you.
Well, I'm thinking outside of the box, come on.
That's the other, that's, that's would be the other one that could do that.
If it was a conditional rezoning request.
That's it, that's the one that does that.
No, this is a rezoning request, which means that any of the, um, principal or special um, uses listed would apply to this piece of property.
Hey Danielle. Can I just, um, add a couple of things for, um, the planning commission? One thing that, um, could be a concern is if you were to have a conditional rezoning before you, um, and you were to grant that for only a bed and breakfast use. They would still have to apply for a special land use permit. Uh, um, and of course, that application's not before you today, so there's a world in which you conditionally rezone this property for only one use. But then, for whatever reason, um, you can't approve a special use permit. Um, that would, you know, obviously, not really do what anyone wants with this, um, property. Um, so that is something to consider. Um, and then the other thing to consider is that um, rezoning, you need to look at your master plan and kind of see where you think this area is going to be in terms of, um, use and, um, zoning districts in five, ten, fifteen years. Uh, and so that's something to consider too, that, you know, based on your opinions and your master plan, maybe it's not a concern if the property was sold in twenty years because the master plan has you heading towards that direction for this area anyways, I'm not sure. Um, but the master plan is kind of like the guiding, uh, principle for zoning and rezoning, so that's something to consider.
Okay, so, what are we supposed to do here?
But even, even if we were to rezone this to R M one tonight, it still has to come back for a special use permit. So, and I, that's what I didn't understand was, um, Mallory is on tonight? Uh, with a conditional zoning, they still have to come back as well.
She was just getting at, is that you're rezoning something conditional to this use, but then you're, they still have to submit a special land use permit, which you have the authority to deny. Property that may or may not have an allowed use, if you will.
But we could put stipulations on that, correct?
Stipulations on what?
Uh, it converts back to the original, uh, zoning if it's sold, can we put that into the?
When you're speaking of a conditional rezoning or a special land use?
Either one, can you not do that? Cause we could put demands on it when it comes back.
Absolutely.
Can that be one of the demands?
A special land use, you have the authority to put, put conditions on. However, I'm not sure that a condition would be that it would revert back to
A different zone.
Zoning district as we have a process for rezoning, um, but Mallory certainly can correct me.
Yeah, I don't, I, I really like the idea it goes back, because that way you don't have creep into that area.
Right, but if it was a conditional zoning and the only condition allowed was single family or a bed and breakfast.
Right.
Pretty small box, right? Am I seeing that properly?
Yeah.
Mallory, can you, can you confirm that if, if the property does get rezoned to the R M one district and then the, uh, current owners, um, decide to sell or whatnot? It doesn't just auto, we can't put a condition and that automatically rezones it back to, um, R three, can we? I mean, it, it doesn't work that way, does it?
No, and, um, I guess, uh, you, I mean, the planning commission can always propose a rezoning, so it's not to say that in twenty years the area has changed so much that you wanna rezone it to something else, um, regardless of who the owner is at the time. Um, you know, it would just kind of depend on what your master plan looks like at that time and also what the actual area looks like at that time.
So, you know, I, 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 I'm just speaking freely, so I apologize, but it, it sounds like, you know, for, to get the planning commission, what I think you guys want, which is to be able to allow this particular property and this property only to have that, that use. You have to go through a different process than what you're going through tonight. And that would be the conditional rezoning process that Dal- uh, Danielle and Abigail, or, I'm sorry, Mallory, I mentioned, it's been a long day, so.
So, um, if we did that for, for these folks that are the property owners, welcome to Cadillac. Um, that, um, plus, I wanna talk afterwards, um, what are we looking at for them? What kind of a realistic wait time? Because I know when you, and, and i- it, it looks like, you know, I can't say for sure, but it looks like this is well-supported. So there will be a delay in, um, in the per- permitting, but that doesn't mean there has to be a delay in preparation. Um, depending on how well, you know, how much you think of that. What are we looking at in terms of when this, I mean realistically, like?
Three to four months, I would say. Rezoning process typically takes about three months, but then you're adding the special land use process on top of that. And the only reason for that is, is because it has to go through one planning commission meeting, which is a month. And then two, um, council meetings, so depending on how those fall, that's another month. And that's like, and you have to submit your application a month before that. So that's where you get that three months, and then same thing for special land use. Application has to be submitted about thirty days in advance, planning commission is once a month, so.
So, you, you know, even if, just thinking this out loud here, you know, knowing that, that there's the conflict of dates coupled with the publishing, uh, requirements for November. So even if the planning commission called a special meeting, um, early in December, um, to be able to try to kickstart the process, cause at that point you'll have had enough time to have had everything noticed. You know, you're still talking about getting it to city council probably by the third Monday of January, uh, for them to then set a public hearing, which would take place, you know, in the beginning, uh, of February. And then.
Then it has to come back for the land use.
And then it would, and then it would come back to land use at the end of February for planning commission to then consider. Maybe, actually, I, I just forgot, there's a, there's a twenty day, there's a twenty day cooling off period after council passes an order, so. So you're talking about March.
So, so, with the, with the, um, what we're, what's being proposed to do, this special contingency zoning thing, um, can we make it where, um, it is a, instead of having to have a special use permit, that those could be the, could just be allowed, um, in that, in that contingency thing, and so that you then don't have to come back for a special use? That if it's a, if it's a bed and breakfast, that that's allowed?
That would be a good Mallory question, because it's not allowed by right within the zone that you're conditionally rezoning it to. I don't know offhand if there's any zone where it's allowed by right.
TS two is the only one that it's allowed by right, but.
Yeah, um, they would, as far as I'm aware, um, you would still have to go through that special land use approval process. Um, and I also just wanna remind the commission that the application before them is not for conditional rezoning. Uh, and so you really can only consider the one that's before you, um. And if the applicants were to come back with a different version in the future, that would be a whole nother, um, issue to consider.
Mallory, just, uh, for clarification here, we would have to deny this tonight. They would have to come back with a new proposal for a conditional zoning change and start that process over, correct?
You, I mean, uh, the commission can, um, you know, do what the zoning ordinance instructs them to do tonight, uh, in terms of whether they approve or deny it. And then that would be up to applicants, um, governments can't suggest or initiate conditional rezoning. It has to be, um, an applicant making an offer.
Can we? Can we ask, can we ask them what they're thinking? Can we ask the applicants for their input on this?
We need to.
May we, please?
Yeah. Jennifer and or Brian.
Um, we initially had asked if conditional was, was appropriate and, um, it was deemed that, we thought that it was not, um, because we thought that that might have been the right route to go. Um, because it also would make us very sad if this became apartments, even if we weren't here. Um, that is certainly not what we would want it to be, um, uh, or what we're requesting. So, I mean, whatever, you know, we, we also would hate it if we decided to move in twenty years and somebody said, oh, great, they rezoned it, so we're gonna turn it into apartments. That's not our intention either, you know, so, um, w- we just wanna open a bed and breakfast. That's all we wanna do. So whatever is the appropriate way to do that, by, by protecting the property and protecting the neighborhood, but also trying to get this so that hopefully we could move forward and, and, and open, oh, you know, next year at some point, you know, that's what we would be happy to do. So if we need to, I don't know if we need to, to, um, withdraw our application and put in a new conditional application, um, if that's appropriate, we, we can do that. Um, whatever is the best course so that we can move forward, we're happy to do. Um, but nobody here, I don't think, also can tell us to do that, but it sounds like that's what's on the table. Um, so I'm looking around at everyone, is this what we're doing? Okay. Um, yeah, so I, we can, we're gonna withdraw this application and we're, we'll put in a new application for conditional, um.
Is that good with Mallory?
Mallory, can they withdraw that application here presently at the meeting?
I believe so, um. Yeah, I don't, I'd have to look through your zoning or receive you a definite answer, but.
But one way or the other, we don't have to move forward, we could decide not to move forward. But, but if, but if they, if we can't withdraw, they have to vote on it still, right?
I think it's appropriate if the applicants wish the planning commission to not consider their application to make that request and then any commission can grant it.
Well, we withdraw this application, we'll put in a new application for conditional, so.
And I'll just add to the planning commission, you know, while Mallory has said that you, you or the city cannot initiate the next step in the process, certainly I think you can sug- you can talk publicly and say that you're looking forward to seeing the application for the next, you know, for the next one. And again, understand that planning commission has been, you know, on the record, at least in my tenure here, several times talking about the reluctance to really consider things that would be considered spot zoning.
Right.
And that, that's what this is, which is why, you know, the original recommendation was to do a rezoning versus something other than that. But understanding now, hearing what the public and what you guys are concerned with, that this would be a more appropriate tool to use.
Yep, sometimes that's the best thing to do.
I wanna just-
I wanna just, I guess publicly as, individually as a commissioner, individually, thank you for your thoroughness. You know, an apology for maybe getting bad direction. But to protect what we're trying to do here. Obviously, the support is here for what you wanna do, but we all know, all good intentions don't always end up that way. And so as a commission, we have to set this in place and protect this. And it certainly seems like the next option, if you chose to go that route, would protect the neighborhood, protect the property and, and fit in line with what we're trying to accomplish. So, thank you.
Well said, Greg.
Yes, okay, we're all on board with that. So at this stage of the game, I can move on? Okay.
Do we, is there a motion or anything needed, Mallory, on removal of this or no?
I mean, it wouldn't hurt, so that's reflected in the minutes, but there's, I don't think there's anything required of you.
I'll make a motion to negate the, the application.
Accept the withdrawal.
I'm sorry, accept the withdrawal.
Second, it's by, we got support, Greg?
Van Hout?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Baumann? Shippers?
Yes.
Bunce? Post?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Bossher?
Yes.
Bent?
Yes.
And then as the city manager said, we forward seeing you in the future, I guess, so.
See you in a couple moments.
Uh, give everybody an opportunity to leave. We still got stuff we're gonna talk about, so if you wanna hang, that's all great, but I will give people an opportunity to leave.
He did a good job on his letter. He did a great job on the letter he sent him explaining it.
Yeah, yeah.
John, how you doing, buddy?
Yeah, me neither. He wrote that letter as a beacon at our church.
He did a good job. Actually, he was abroad, unless I brought that up, so I think that's great.
He just retired from a power company out there.
Yeah.
Oh, it's in process.
This is gonna be a fight.
Not yet, no.
It wasn't a fight.
We ready for new business?
Uh, I'm, I'm heading there, yes, I am. So, on new business, we have North Lake Street Flats sketch and final site plan approval. Please.
Thank you. So we have the North Lake Street Flats. This is located at the three one eight North Lake Street. Project location is what is in blue. It is the east side of North Lake Street and multiple parcels totaling one point two seven acres. Prior approvals and updates. This was originally approved in November of twenty twenty four with conditions. Lot consolidation, Nelson Street vacation, and department review comments addressed. The easement agreement required, the required easement agreement was not finalized, which is why revised site plans are being presented today. The drainage will now be handled entirely on site. And the landscape buffer has been reduced. All other conditions of the original approval have been satisfied. Now, this was all before I came on. So the request, amend our PUD sketch plan and final site plan approval. Construction of two apartment buildings with forty-eight total units. Here's a picture of the three one eight North Lake Street. An additional picture. Overview, three-story slab-on-grade apartment building. Each building, twenty-four units. One studio, four hundred and twenty-four, twenty-five square feet. Seventeen one-bedroom, six hundred square feet. And six two-bedroom at eight hundred and fifty-five square feet. This is designed for higher-density residential use. Business District B one zoning district aligns with the city's RM one and RM two zoning intent. It's a transitional zone, single-family to higher-density uses. And the recent zoning updates promote alternative housing types and reduced parking minimums. Site context and surroundings. It's vacant land, one point two seven five acres. It's bordered by public alleys to the north and to the south. It's adjacent to B three zoning. And surrounded uses are single-family, multiple-family offices and businesses. Here is the parcel with the plans, with the parking lot and the two buildings. Site development and amenities. Sixty-nine parking spaces. One point four four per unit. They'd be a nine-by-twenty-foot stalls, parking spot. Bicycle and accessible parking. Dumpster enclosure. Upgraded sidewalk and curb cut on North Lake Street. Dense landscaping screening. Site lighting, it would be wall pole-mounted downward focus. Stormwater managed on-site with the detention and retention control overflow. Parking and circulation, zoning calls for two spaces. Ninety-six total, sixty-nine were provided. Asphalt, concrete surface. Signing, there would be one ground-mounted at the entrance. Then they would do the appropriate zoning compliance with the, subject to the sign permits. The setbacks and the building heights. The setbacks from the front is ten foot. The side is fifteen. Rear is twenty-five feet. And the maximum building height is forty feet. The application review checklist, complete narrative and legal description. They have the date, locations on the map. They have the owner and applicant information. They have building, parking, sidewalks, the driveway, landscaping, signage, utilities and zoning. And then the landscape, stormwater and sign plans are still needed. So special land use standards. Harmonious with neighborhood and character and scale. No negative change to the area's character. No interference with adjacent property enjoyment. Improves site and supports city housing goals. Meets health and safety codes. Adequate utilities and public services. Consistent with zoning and comprehensive plan. And there is no outdoor play area proposed. Approval process and requirements. Planning commission reviews for R PUD standards and city compliance. Can approve, deny, or approve with conditions. Permit void if construction does not begin within one year. And any new development requires renewed commission approval. Commission action. Approval or deny sketch and final site plan. The North Lake Street Flats R PUD special land use at our location here was submitted. Approval condition on zoning permitting compliance with planning commission requirements. The planning commission shall approve or deny the sketch plan and final site plan for the proposed North Lake Street Flats residential plan unit development as a special land use. And it was submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. There's three, three spots in here that it's mentioned that there's a thirty-inch-high masonry wall to the east property line. You left that out for why? Hi.
Hi, my name is Michael Lake, I'm the applicant from Vena Clausen Construction, also here on behalf of the property owner and developer, Gary Pitch. The masonry wall in question on the east side, that was originally part of the proposed plan at the original commission when we submitted to the city way before a year ago's meeting. At that time, there was comments received from the plan reviewers and from the city requesting that that wall be removed, cause it would have deferred water across the property into the adjacent public alleyway. As such, we had removed that from our plans. The previous plans, as approved from this commission a year ago, did not include said stated wall. I have since requested that that be removed from those notes and not reflected in what we are requesting approval for today.
Personally, when I read this, Michael, I felt that thirty-inch wall was there to protect the fence on that east property line. My interpretation. Cause I'm not sure where you're gonna put all your snow personally, but that was my interpretation, and maybe that was to protect G and D's fence.
That being said, with the requirements that we have been requested from the city in order to maintain the storm management from the neighboring property due to the abatement of West Nelson that, that had been previously running through, putting a wall would not allow that to occur. It would actually not allow the water to come within our property for us to manage and maintain from the neighboring property. A requirement is part of the city and the city engineer, in order for us to proceed, is to take on a large amount of the water necessary from the neighboring property as well as from east Nelson up the hill that comes down and across our neighboring property that we, as part of what we're doing and as a community benefit, is to maintain that water within our development.
That'll be a, a crock and a drain somewhere?
There, there, there's a couple drainage structures and then substructure that will then get the water back out and along to, in, into the primary storm system. One thing to note with what you have seen today, that there are not any changes to the previous plan. The plans of the buildings, the footprints of them are all but the same. The actual proposed elevations and appearances are the same outside of a few deck posts that previously came to the ground. No longer do, we're facing, Lake Street, thank you. We're facing Lake Street in order to allow us to move the buildings closer to Lake Street, giving a larger landscape buffer on our rear yard, where we were not able to meet the required ten feet. In working through this with Teresa, the city engineer and Danielle, we have proposed a seven-foot buffer in lieu of that, but still maintained all of the requested water.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, since Michael's in front of us?
I know at some point, we talked about the parking and, and the requirement of two, proposed of one point four four. We talked about that at one point, and was that Danielle, did she have any that was approved or?
As part of the R PUD, lost for words here, you have the ability to waive certain requirements underneath that R PUD, meaning density, parking, landscaping setbacks. And that was one of the things that you guys took into consideration at the previous approval. Was that the one and a half-ish per unit was sufficient.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate you being here tonight.
And I would like to say that the landscaping plan was supplied to us and I believe that it is sufficient, but that seven feet buffer, they have proposed landscaping that I think meets the needs.
Seven feet is where, sorry?
So that would be from the edge of the back property line, so G and D line, to the parking lot. There's seven feet of proposed landscaping area. Truly by ordinance, if this was to be approved outside of an R PUD, the ten-foot would be the requirement. However, because this is coming through as an R PUD, the planning commission has the authority to to waive certain requirements, and that would be one of them.
Okay.
So I have to ask, will the, on the seven-foot landscaping buffer, will it have matching galvanized painted fire pit rings like have been installed at the other Lake Street condo property on the west edge that are painted so colorfully?
I can say that on this site plan that is in front of you, that is not detailed. Anything like that would have to come back through for site plan approval.
Good answer.
I have no current intentions of planning such.
Do you know what I'm referencing?
Okay, moving right along.
Do we need to make a motion to approve the?
Yes.
amended plan, is that it? Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended plan for North Lake Street Flats.
The sketch and final?
The sketch and final site plan.
As presented?
As presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have support? Mr. Dean? Bossher?
Yes.
Bunce? Bent?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Van Hout?
Yes.
Post?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Baumann?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when you starting?
No.
That was my first.
Permit.
Okay. I thought you were gonna leave here and start, no, that's good.
Got the shovel in the truck.
Yeah, shovel in the truck.
I'll have an email in my inbox when I get home asking why I'm not starting tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have your email address, so it won't be from me.
Okay, moving right along in new business. Joint, joint planning and development meeting. This must be a, Teresa.
So, an annual joint meeting. For a redevelopment-ready community, we need to get everybody together for a joint meeting. And I propose that the planning commission hosts the meeting in January. So that would be the January twenty-six, twenty twenty-six meeting. We're inviting like the zoning board of appeals, historical district, the joint planning commission, two members to meet so everybody can talk, see what each group has done, maybe ask some questions and work together. So I propose that, if we don't have a problem with that, I'd like to do that for January.
Schedule it.
Thank you.
Yeah, she doesn't care.
She's just a concerned citizen in that.
Yeah, just a concerned citizen then.
I'll be in the public, I'll be in the public at that point.
Yes.
Heckle.
Do you need a motion or you just, we're good? That's good, it's just information, perfect. Anything else pertaining to that, Teresa, before I keep?
Nope, all set, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, old business, nothing, communications, I'm back to you again, see?
Nothing at this time?
It says zoning code rewrite update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just reading, was I?
She has to say to me, yes. So Friday, we are having a meeting on October thirty-first at ten o'clock in the morning at the Wellfield office. You are invited to attend if you'd like. We are gonna be going over the advisory committee for the zoning code rewrite progressive. Will be there, they're going to be hosting the meeting. It is open to the public. Um, it is open to the public. It's not going to be super formal, but it is going to be, um, kind of time-sensitive, about an hour and a half. So we're going to try to limit some questions. And if people do have additional questions about the zoning rewrite or to Progressive, we're going to have them place them on a card and then submit that. But we are going to be talking through the zoning rewrite.
Do we have, uh, an estimated goal in time? Are you getting deep enough into this to get some sort of feel for?
We're hoping by April to have it completed. But we're going to find out more basically on Friday on some of the areas that we really want to hit. Yeah. Okay, cool.
We don't have to dress up in costume, right?
No, that's optional.
This trick-or-treat day. Uh, board member comments? Anyone? In case you care. We're all good. Public comment. Any public have a comment this evening yet? I hope we didn't drive you away or entertained you well. I don't know. No public comment, other business, and if no one cares, we're out. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Linda, good luck.